I call the meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of solemn meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
...
Good morning, everyone. It's cold. I would like to say wintry, but it's getting close to spring, but it still has not given up the ghost. It's 14 degrees out at Russian Fork this morning, although it was in your hopes.
Three below, Tom.
Three below.
Is that with wind chill?
Yeah.
That's some temperature. Okay, Jackie, we'll have the minutes from last meeting. Red, crew.
Good morning. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, February 20, 2014, 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Donnie Tenny, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Megan Pomeroy, County Administrator, and Japhyne Dinkwater, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of February 13, 2014, as submitted. Megan Pomeroy provided a review of the agenda item concerning the Lewis Services Agreement renewal. Ms. Pomeroy advised that additional bids are expected and the items not yet ready for action. The item will be placed on future agenda. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the appointment of Charlena Gubank at the Bacchanal Upshur Board of Health, to the Bacchanal Upshur Board of Health as recommended by Josh Marsh, Director. Ms. Gubank's term will expire June 30, 2018. Dr. Joseph Reed, Medical Director of the Bacchanal Upshur Board of Health, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of the Board of Health's efforts to institute a campus-wide clean air policy at the New National Guard Center Convention Center at on Russian Fork Road, which will be opening early summer 2014. Dr. Reed advised that in addition to banning the use of tobacco products, the Board is recommending that electronic cigarettes/vaporization units be included in the ban. Dr. Reed requested the letters, a letter of support from the Commission. Rick Edwards, Upshur County Resident, expressed concerns about the campus-wide nature of the request and suggested that designated areas for tobacco product usage be included in the proposal, and has the Commission decline the request for the letter of support. After discussion, J.C. Rafferty advised that the Commission will review the information for possible action at a future meeting. Laura Ward, Country Roads Transit Director, appeared before the Commission and provided an update/status report on the Country Roads Transit Services. Ms. Ward provided an update/status report on the Country Roads Services. Ms. Ward reported a 7.5% overall increased usage over the past year, which includes a 52% increase by non-senior/nondisabled patrons. Country Roads Transit will be partnering with the Upshur County Senior Center and will increase the number of vehicles from one to four, which will facilitate a designated pickup route to be established and services to be expanded. Ms. Ward requested funding for the 2014-15 fiscal year. No action was taken at this time. The Commission will review the request during budget sessions in March 2014. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the change in employment status of Jody Martin from full-time to part-time, E-911 Communication Center Dispatcher, effective March 2, 2014. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the request from the Office of Emergency Management to use the purchasing cards for purchases. They are authorized by federal grants that will be reimbursed by grant funds. The use of the key cards will speed up payments to vendors. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Mary Casto, Kristen Van Valdison, and Amanda Clark as volunteers for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the employment of Carrie Wallace as Assistant County Administrator, effective March 3, 2014, at the annual salary of $40,000 as recommended by Megan Pomeroy, County Administrator. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Priority Project Listing and assignment of local priority points. After discussion, Ms. Rafferty advised that the Commission will continue to review the listing and will place the item on a future agenda for action. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the number of election officials and election commissioners for the May 13, 2014 primary election as submitted. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the number of emergency absentee ballot commissioners to be one team comprised of one Republican, one Democrat for the May 13, 2014 primary election as requested. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of the request from Deputy Taco Wilphone, Upshur County Clerk, to appoint a temporary replacement of the Democratic Ballot Commissioner due to the current Democratic Ballot Commissioner being unavailable. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Elizabeth Mouse as temporary Democratic Ballot Commissioner for the May 13, 2014 primary election as recommended. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four information items. Number one, statewide transportation improvement program, request for comment. Number two, monthly cap report, January 2014. Number three, Upshur County Commission Center reports as listed. Number four, January standard meetings as listed. Number five, meeting minutes and our financial reports as listed. Number six, quarter of equalization review as listed. Number seven, meetings as listed. Number eight, appointments needed or are pending as listed. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following request for time out of office for Commission employees as listed. The Commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. Terry Joe Bennett, Upshur County Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, appeared before the Commission, reviewed a road name request. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved Mountain Lake Road as a private driveway off of Thorpe Mountain Way. The Commission recessed at 11:00 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 1:00 p.m. As supported review and equalization. The Commission adjourned as supportive review and equalization at 3:00 p.m. The Commission reconvened at 3:00 p.m. And with no further business, a motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenny, Commission meeting at 10:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any additions or corrections to the last minutes, as Red? Not such corrections being noted. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from last week?
Some, the second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opponent, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have approval of minutes for the Board of Equalization Review. Have the Commissioners had a chance to review those minutes to determine their accuracy and if they reflect what happened during the meetings that we had last week?
Maybe, the break.
Last month, break.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have at 9:15, which will be appropriate this time, Mr. Burl Smith, Director of the Solid Waste Authority for Upshur County, will have a presentation with Kelly Samms. Burl, if I take the podium? Kelly, whichever. Please identify yourself for the viewing audience. I've already identified you, but...
So they know which one's Burl and which one's Kelly.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, I know most, all of those three for quite a few years, so it makes me run some jokes, I think. I'm Burl Smith. I'm Director of the Upshur County Solid Waste Authority, and I have been in that position for going on my second year now. I was on the Board prior to that. This is Kelly Samms. She is the local environmental coordinator for the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection, the REEP Program, and she can specifically tell you some things on that. What I wanted to deal with today is two items. The broad scope is the Make a Shine, which is an annual thing that the City of Bacchanan and Upshur County, the Solid Waste Authority promotes, dealing with the cleanup of Upshur County and on the spring clean. And this is a statewide promotion. Kelly will describe some of that in more detail. But we will be hopefully appearing both at City Council and the County Commission meeting, probably the last meeting in March, for you to sign a proclamation for that. And that may be a joint meeting. If that happens to be a joint meeting of the two, we'll cover that and get a picture of both groups signing the proclamation simultaneously. But that is one of the things. But we've been really interested in the Adopt a Highway Program. This is a long-running program that many people in Upshur County take part in, and we want to have a promotional object, really to encourage people to continue with their program and get new people involved in that. And Kelly, as part of her responsibilities, she deals with the Adopt a Highway Program, so she could be a sample.
Thank you, Burl.
So we should have in front of you a press release. I'll direct your attention to that for a moment. So as a top volunteer, make Upshur County Shine. And then the second and third paragraph will just go over some of the statistics from the Adopt a Highway Program and Make a Shine Program. Last year, and this is for 2013, during the statewide West Virginia Make a Shine cleanup, 75 volunteers moved nearly 1,400 pounds of litter and debris from public lands in Upshur County, including four acres of parks. Also in 2013, 28 organizations representing 614 participants in the Adopt a Highway or Adopt a Spot programs cleaned 158 miles of Upshur County roads and highways, collecting 956 bags of garbage and 75 tires. Together, these groups spent nearly 300 hours doing cleanups. So I think that demonstrates what value the county is already getting from these programs, and we'd like to really see them expand. There's already quite a few roads and parks that are adopted, but there's plenty more that could be adopted. So that's what we're hoping to accomplish with the promotional meeting, as Burl was mentioning. March 13th, that's a Thursday, 6:30 p.m., at the Middle School Cafeteria. And we certainly, if you'd like to join us there, we'd love to have you. If the county would like to participate in perhaps adopting a highway yourselves or the Adopt a Spot, any kind of park that's along the roadway could be adopted as well. And also just hoping, getting a word out about the meeting as well as the programs I also have created a curriculum for high school teachers to use if they would like to do Adopt a Highway or Adopt a Spot as part of service learning machine. In order to graduate these days, they have to have a service project of some sort. And so I've developed a guide for high school teachers if they would like to use that in their classroom and also satisfy that service requirement at the same time. And at the meeting itself, we're hoping attendees will, we're inviting current volunteers as well, and then anyone that's interested in the Adopt a Highway Program can attend. They'll learn more about the program, as well as they can go ahead and sign up. We want to have a map on display so that they can see what's already adopted, what's available. And we'll also be doing the safety training, very important, so there's required safety program or training. They can do that right there on the spot and go ahead and get started and hopefully sign up for their first or schedule their first cleanup for April 26th, which is the statewide spring cleanup for Adopt a Highway.
Well, thank you for your information.
You have any questions?
I did, if you'd have other questions, I'll send the question.
When you adopt a highway, do you do a certain length, like a mile, mile and a half, three miles, or how do you?
It has to be at least two miles long. It can be longer, but it has to be two miles, both sides of the road. Now, if you had, for instance, a spot that wouldn't work for that, you can do Adopt a Spot. If it's along a roadway and it's not two miles long, that fits into the Adopt a Spot category, which is very similar, but doesn't have the requirement for being two miles.
What's the, what type of locations would a spot be defined as? A place where you have a turnaround in the road, a rural road, where trash, or some people use that as a means of disposing of trash?
Right, some trouble areas like that, or for instance, in Upshur County, the Crossroads Recycling Center, the T.E.R.C.E.O.S. group has adopted that area, and they clean it up every two weeks. Is that correct?
Except that way.
Yes. The requirement is three cleanups a year, but like the T.E.R.C.E.O.S., many of the groups do go way beyond the required three cleanups per year.
I wish you success.
You know how many people are caught littering in Upshur County in a year?
I need to know.
Are there several? And what are the efforts?
That are actually caught littering?
I'm just curious, because it seems like, I mean, this is a great program, but it seems like that an important part of it is catching people and making them maybe adopt 10 miles or whatever, because this would be, this is like picking up your kid cleaning his room all the time and not doing anything to make them clean their own room up.
Right.
So I'm just curious. The two questions I usually ask are, how's this compared to the previous year as far as the number of bags that are picked up and the tonnage? And then number two, who has the statistics on how many people are caught littering?
I don't have those with me today, but I could get them for you.
It'd be interesting to see.
I do have some numbers on the littering.
Okay.
The reason being is the Upshur County Solid Waste Authority gets $25 for each person who is convicted of littering. It's part of the court costs. There's $25 go to that. And we probably receive in the neighborhood of $300 a year, which is about a dozen people who are actually convicted annually here in Upshur County from that. We get a magistrate court check.
And I would add that the probation office does have a section, adopted, so I would presume that some of these folks aren't going out and having to do cleanups.
Who's adopted through who?
The Upshur County Probation Office.
Oh, okay. Well, Rodney Rawson's coming in here after my own, and I'm not sure of the Community Corrections Program. Do they have a section?
I think they have, at least in the past, so I'd like to get them active.
Because I do know they use the Community Corrections Groups to pick up a lot of their mess.
Yes.
A lot of what they do.
Some of that that they do is not through an Adopt a Highway Program, like the pickup litter, even though it's not through an Adopt a Highway Program.
It's not registered through your organization?
Not always.
Would it be better for work?
It would be good if it worked.
That could be tracking how much litter we're putting up.
Right. And you might, and you wouldn't be dictating areas, maybe there are adopted in some of the organizations. We can talk to Rodney about that.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Excuse me, could you repeat the date and time for the middle school floor? March 13th, the Thursday, March 13th, 6:30 p.m. At the Bacchanal Upshur Middle School Cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few minutes yet before our next appointment, which is at 9:45. We've got about 20 minutes, so we'll continue with items for review and session approval. We can review, approve, approval of the 2014-2015 Lewis County Community Corrections Grant Application and Board Appointments.
And I believe that Micah may be here later with Rodney to explain the board's opinion.
You're saying we might want to wait on that?
Yeah, I think that the Board is towards the end of those pages that I included in the...
Question.
But I believe that she'll be here later.
Okay, well, we'll move then to the employment of E-91 Communication Center Dispatcher, Candy Dolan, at a rate of $10 per hour effective March 3, 2014. On page 22. Would you like to elaborate on that just a little bit?
Well, they are down at least one full-time staff member, so they've done their interviews recently. I think that this person does come in with some experience, so...
Sorley needed.
The only person, yeah.
And if she has that good experience, which requires she can go on immediately and once she familiarizes herself with Upshur County certainly. Is there a motion to approve the hiring of Ms. Dolan? Does the motion approve the hire?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Having moved to seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Next, for your letter of support, requesting Dr. Joseph Reed, Upshur County Health Department. If you recall, Dr. Reed appeared before this Commission last week requesting support for a request by the Bacchanal Upshur Health Department to the National Guard Armory Interconstruction that smoking be prohibited campus-wide, that the military who has authority over that structure or location designate the campus or the entire facility as being smoke-free or tobacco-free, you know, just smoke-free and tobacco-free, which included non-smoking or smokeless tobacco. We had a discussion from a member of the public, Rick Edwards, that was somewhat concerned about that aspect and requested we consider not doing that. So we have a request from the Health Department through Dr. Reed to endorse their letter to the military authorities overseeing the National Guard Armory, the new National Guard Armory, to designate that facility as campus-wide tobacco-free. Is there a motion to support the Bacchanal Upshur Health Department in that effort?
Well, you had expressed some concern last week about the infringement of one rights. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
I don't know that I did express that concern.
Yeah, you said something about, I mean, unless you're, I thought we were going to take a look at this and add some kind of a phrase in here.
I wear that. I know Rick Edwards was opposed to it when he spoke, but...
Well, you made some mention about waiting a while.
Well, this is a while. It's been a week.
I don't have, I don't have a problem doing that. I just thought, I thought we talked last week about possibility of changing the Murphy small bit, but it...
I have requested Dr. Reed to provide us with additional letter, and this is the letter that he provided.
I must have misunderstood. I certainly don't have a problem. I would move that we approve the letter as sent as forward.
I think this, Colorey will write a letter on our behalf if we pass this motion.
Right, and I can put this on your letterhead and, you know...
Correct.
Thank you, Colonel.
Do I have a second to the motion? I will second the motion myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next we have, again, this is up to the military to make a decision before we make a request or endorsement, I should say, the Health Department.
And I really don't think that is the biggest problem in the county, and I think the biggest problem is, is all the drugs. It's passed out my prescriptions, and that's a bigger problem in the county than smoking or tobacco use, even though I think people smoke for years and use tobacco. They shouldn't be healthier if they didn't, but I think the major problem is the drug issue.
Thank you. Next, we have volunteer application for Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility, Whitney Osborne. She's a student at Upshur County or Upshur, Bacchanal Upshur High School. I believe this is part of her, I'm assuming this is part of her senior project that's required for graduation. Do I have a motion to approve Whitney Osborne as a volunteer?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, following the number then to the, for your information, we have a request for donation for auction by the Upshur County, Bacchanal Upshur High School Band. They're having a fundraiser for that band. We received one from David Maxwell, requesting a donation in either money, a gift, a certificate or a service provided. I believe in the past, on similar requests, these organizations, we have given, donated a pool pass for the swimming pool. That's suitable. Megan, I think a lot of those times you're going to have to pass for similar organizations. A motion to grant a pool pass to the Upshur County High School Band for their fundraising.
Similar?
Seconded?
Seconded, and just a question, did we have some limitations on the size of that? Or I think there were some restrictions.
Well, are you, do you want to donate a pool pass or a pool party? A pass the whole year or an actual party?
I think we need to clarify that. Well, I'm not sure. This is, this is the band Boosters.
Brilliant.
The other, I don't have a problem making a donation. I think we just, I don't think in the past we contributed to, like, Boosters groups or I think we, the Youth Care, I believe we sponsored the pool parties for each other that way. And I don't, I don't have a problem helping, I think we just need to, we need to have some established guidelines of exactly what organizations we're going to donate to and exactly what. But I'm not sure that we've donated to, like, Boosters groups, I think, but we've done some to the schools and those type of things, so... Well, I think we just need to, we need to determine exactly, because the value of a pool pass, what is a pool pass now?
For a party, I believe it's about $1.75.
Okay, and what is it for, if you give a pool pass for a family for the whole year, then you're talking, you're $400?
For, like, a family of four?
Right, a family, a pool pass for the whole year, for four?
For four, yeah, I mean, I have to go looking. I think it's like $125.
At least $125.
$125, and then $25 for each person.
Okay, so $125.
I believe that, unless it's changed.
So it's a big couple, $100, $200.
Do you wish to take a motion for a pool party or a pool pass? Do you wish to maintain?
Well, let's, let's...
Let me, you're the one who made a motion, so would you prefer a pool pass or a pool party?
I'm waiting to see what Mr. Chaney says. We should do something in reference to that.
I know we've provided this type of...
Full pass or full party. I think we should try to help out what we can.
I think we've donated this type of thing, like, to Chamber of Commerce and under such.
I believe the one last year, I know I sent it to Alyssa Lively, who I think is with Creveau Keen, is that right?
I think so.
I think that's, we did one last year, and that was for a party.
Well, this is going to be something, I guess, if everybody has, well, sale and auction and...
Correct.
Well, why don't we, why don't we pass the motion that we will donate something, and then we can decide, we can look at what all the options are, if that works, or do we need to have specifics?
Well, we have the party, we have the function scheduled for this Saturday, I believe, March, no, it's a week and Saturday, so we have two weeks to determine this, a week and a half. So do you wish to amend your motion?
I do.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to review the request and determine the...
Appropriate?
Appropriate item to donate to this function? Is there a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Having been motion made and carried, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. All in home, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have the Upshur County Public utility values, which I understand have decreased by $5 million. Mr. Tenny, you explained the other day what the likely reason for this reduction was.
Well, I'm not sure what all that includes, but I do know includes like...
Natural gas and...
The retail, selling natural gas. Electricity that's in the area, I mean, it's, those public, it's a public utilities. And I think we ended up paying, I'm not sure, I think it was like almost $6 million.
Five million, $768.
Okay. And then I think we also received our values, and I think, I think that, more correctly, they were down $63 million.
$63 million. 63 million.
It was estimated that they'd be down more than that, but, so you've got 63 million and, and that's a lot, that's personal property, so that, a lot of that relates to natural gas production, so that would be the wholesale, natural gas production, a lot of that. And then the public utilities would be the retail, natural gas sales and all the other utilities that are public. And so basically, we're probably looking at $350,000 less this year than we have last year as far as budget goes, so might keep that in mind, Sheriff.
What was that number?
We're down $350,000 from last year in tax revenue.
Okay. Next item we have for review, correspondence from Senator Joe Manchin III, which regards the, which relates to the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act, which was recently passed by Congress, and in essence it defers or delays premium increases for up to four years for individuals who have flood insurance in West Virginia or across the United States for that matter. Many individuals in this county rely on flood insurance for their property because many locations are in floodplains. This, again, is kind of connected, we've had this discussion before, in the floodplain ordinance, we must maintain and enforce floodplain ordinances in Upshur County in order for the federal government to grant floodplain insurance for residents of Upshur County. We've had cases in the past where people have been somewhat disgruntled because of the enforcement of a floodplain ordinance by, by the office, the perigeral ministers. But it is important that we follow those rules and regulations that the federal government lays down, otherwise that would impact the availability of flood insurance for the citizens of Upshur County. Okay, moving on. We have the comprehensive wellness strategy, a priority list update, which we discussed and shortly discussed last week. We have a couple of weeks yet to identify a project. Project we designed or designated last year was the Inred Public Service District Phase Six Water Project. That funding was not forthcoming, and therefore they were advised that they could resubmit that request. It's our responsibility as commissioners to list those items, those projects in the county that we would prioritize. So we will have a discussion of our ourselves, review this, and not a discussion, but we will review the information with the Regional Seven folks and decide which project will be receiving a priority endorsement within the next week or two. Okay. We have a community participation grant of work to Civil American Veterans, Chapter Thirty-Six, any amount of $8,000. Maybe I would like to identify that.
That is the second grant they've received. The first was for $10,000, and this one is for additional improvements to their community development.
Very good.
Are those both from the same, the same sponsors, I mean, as far as...
I believe the first one's from Clark Barnes and the second one's from...
Okay. Mr. Tenny?
No. But they, they're the community, apartment participation grants.
Okay, next we have an invitation to Records Management Prevention Board Grant Award Ceremony at the Division of Culture and History, and that is a grant that was provided to our county, Raggeday's Office, Magistrate, Circuit Clerk's Office for the records management. I think it's, if you want to discuss what the project involves, what has to do with the older records being taken care of so they can be stored.
Right, and then I think he also first, or paid for part of the first, the shredder of that.
The shredder, correct. Mr. Brady has been working on the project the last couple of days, sending the county some money by shredding documents rather than having someone pay to haul them off and shreds.
I have been doing that.
I know, that's a, that's a commendable activity. Okay. We next have a few more minutes left. We have the Upshur County Sheriff's Financial Statement for February, or for January 2014. Commissioners, have any comments concerning any of these funds set forth in that statement? If not, we'll move on. We have a agenda notice of meetings for Committee Corrections Program, March 3, 2014, and also the Upshur County Solid Waste Authority meeting, and to be on March 10. Of course, we have committee corrections appearing before us in a few moments. We have meeting minutes for the Public Service District and the Upshur Citizen Corps. So we have a couple of minutes. You've gone through, are there any observations or statements or comments by the commissioners? Okay, well, it looks to me like it is a quarter of 10, so we will have Corporal Rodney Rollison, our client supervisor. Rodney, appreciate your coming in to provide your annual report to us.
How do you all know some more?
Fine, Mr. Tenny.
Good.
Could you all, you all about the folders and stuff?
Yes. You are always, always very efficient in setting forth this information, clear and understandable.
That's how you have an efficient staff.
I do have a business. As you take a look through the folder, you'll see for the, for the year 2013, how home confinement did, we did some graphs and stuff that actually show you, give you a little bit better idea, like over the recent years of how the trend has followed. In the, for the year 2013, home confinement program saved the county $304,657.42 in regional jail fees. With that, the program collected $56,024 for a grand total of savings for $360,681.42. Actually broke down on the next page that you'll see, each month, the amount of fees that were collected in the office for the entire year. And if you will look at the, the next graph, it'll actually show you over the last years from 2011, 12, and 13, the amount of fees that have been collected in our office.
Why is this down from, well...
There's a number, a number of people that were involved in the program.
Yes, yeah, the number of clients, as, as you look to the, the next...
It's not, it's not the amount that...
No, we're not collecting less, we're just, have less people on home confinement.
Okay, so it's not, a part of that equation is not that there's a reduction of fees that people want and have to pay? That's not part of the equation?
Well, there is some reduction, not as much as what there had been in the past for this year, but there is some reduction, and I provided you a sheet, I think we're only down amount of fees that were collected, only about $1,000, that the people, and we had sent out notices to them, that they need to get caught back up and pay the fees. And, and that sheet is just outlining the names of the individuals that never paid on their balance while they were on home confinement. So it has been higher in the past, this year we were able to collect a lot more of it. So it's only about $1,000, and letters have been sent out requesting that money from those individuals.
So can you explain why the, so are you, are you saying that...
If you look at the next graph, Commissioner Tenny, on the next page, you'll see that in 2011, we had 91 clients, 2012, we had 75, and 2013, we only had 64.
Right. My question is why that decline was causing that?
It might be an issue as far as, some of it has to do with legislature, change the laws on like driving suspensions and stuff, where it used to be, if you got first offense driving suspended, it was six months, they dropped it down to 30 days, you know, so some of it's that and some of it's just referrals, two or three referrals.
And those referrals come from magistrates and the prosecutor's office and the...
Circuit clerk, or circuit court.
Circuit court.
And magistrates and prosecutor's office. Yes. Also, on the next graph, you'll see on the next page, you'll see the number of referrals that we've got from magistrate Kaufman, magistrate Adams, circuit court, and outside counties. The outside counties is, like Harrison County calling one enough, we will go ahead and monitor one of their people that got arrested there, being that they live in Upshur County, and we, we do that also.
When we do that, then do we give the fees?
Yes, sir. Yes. And we don't pay them if there's a reduction of fee, they have to pay the entire amount.
So what would be your explanation for the, the difference in the referral sources of more than double between magistrate, what do you treat that to?
Well, to be honest with you, I don't...
Are there different cases?
No, they see the same cases in both, both magistrate courts. You know, from what I understand, I think magistrate Kaufman sees a lot more cases maybe than magistrate Adams sees, and on top of that, I think maybe that it just depends on the type of case that goes through that magistrate's office. You know, if there's more driving suspensions or DUIs that go through magistrate Kaufman rather than magistrate Adams, then of course he would have more.
A magistrate has latitude to refer them to your program in some instances, as opposed to setting bail upon and confining them to regional jail.
Yes, sir. If you look on the next page, it just gives the amount of people that are violated for home confinement this year and the reasons that they were violated.
Seems to be a pretty stagnant numbers, or similar number every year.
Yes, it's really close every year. And you'll see the graph on the following page that shows 2011 violated 17, 2012 14, 2013 16 violations for this past year. Also, I provided a list to you all showing the names, when the individuals were hooked up and when they were released, so you could see, you know, the amount of time they were on home confinement and which magistrate or judge actually placed them there. You know, some of them's only for five days, some of them's for seven days. So I think, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit more here in a minute about what I would like to do for the following year from now on, which would allow more people, I think, to be placed on home confinement because you have a better way of tracking them, so. So that gives you the next several pages of the list, then the, the judges, and then you can see on the following, on the last page of the graph, you can see exactly which offenses that we had the most of in the home confinement, and the majority of them are driving offenses. Your DUIs, your driving suspensions, that kind of thing, driving approach. With that, I'd like to go on and proceed into with the home confinement equipment that we have now. We purchased it several years back, and they call them like RF units, is what they're called. You actually have to have a, a home confinement box, which is your receiver, and then you put an ankle bracelet on somebody, which is your transmitter. The only way that for me to know if somebody goes out of range is when that ankle bracelet goes further than 50 to 75 feet away from that box. It tells me that they're out of range. With that, you know, it's, over the years, it's been, with the amount of people that are privately employed for themselves, like our contractors and that kind of thing in Upshur County, it's been hard to regulate. For instance, if somebody comes in and they work for a construction company and they like, well, they don't have a set schedule, you know, if it rains one day, they might be home. If it's not raining one day, they might leave at 8:00 in the morning and, and get back at dark, you know, in the summer months. What I'm asking you all to, to look into, and I have got with 3M Technology, which is the current, the people we're under contract with right now, as far as this, is going to complete GPS units. That allows me to, one, know where they are 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I can pull up the computer, I can look at them and say, you know, if they, if they tell me, you know, I've got a job to do today, and I've got to go to Morgantown and work on the hospital or whatever, that allows me to see exactly when they leave, the road they traveled, the speed that they're going down the four lane, and it, it gives me their speed that they're traveling, and it also, if they, they would happen to stop at, let's say Gomart, or stop at Hardee's or something like that, it allows me to know where they're stopping at and for how long they stopped there. So for them to say, you know, right now with, with this unit that we have, if they call in and say, I, I got to go to work, I'm going to Morgantown, you know, currently, I don't know if they're in Morgantown, if they're in Clarksburg, if they're stopping at, you know, the sheets for an hour, or where they're at until they come home. This allows me, and I think it takes a lot of liability off the county too, in saying, you know, this, we know he was there because it's going to show on GPS, it's going to show how long he was there and when he left. If he's telling me he's going to Morgantown to work at the hospital, I know how long he's at that hospital. I know the direction of travel he took to get to that hospital and the speed that he actually traveled to get there. You know, so there, it takes away all the uncertainties about where they're at, what they're doing, and, you know, when they're returning home. You know, you take somebody that's privately employed for themselves, you really don't know unless I would drive to Morgantown and see that they're actually on that location. You know, so this gives us an extra, you know, a very, very high-tech tool to be able to use. With that, the fee that we currently pay now is $1.50 per day. That fee will double to 3.20, a little over double, to 3.20, but that cost is passed on to the client rather than to the county. Okay? And a, and a lot of it, you know, you know as well as I do, you know, with the reduced fees and with everything, you know, just makes it, rather than pay the 48, 50, if we have to pay $3, you know, it's a lot better for the county than to, than to pay that because that, that money is actually passed on to the home confinement client. With that, it actually, I've actually requested the circuit judges and the magistrates to increase the home confinement fees to $15 a day to offset that, that cost. We haven't raised home confinement fees in this county for, for years. Commissioner Brady, you probably know, it's been that way for, for years, years and years. I think almost since it started, it was $10 a day. Then that way, if we do get the reduced fees, we're still going to be able to, you know, maintain. Also with that, with that GPS unit, it allows you to put inclusionary zones and exclusionary zones, which means the availability of using it for domestic violence. For instance, if you have an individual that hasn't been involved in a real bad domestic, rather than place him over in jail, you know, it's up there in jail, they can actually be released on GPS home confinement. I can place an exclusionary zone, which prohibits him from being in several exclusionary zones, from his wife's work, or husband's work, from the residents, from, if it's against the children, from the schools. So I can actually go in and put an exclusionary zone that if he is released on GPS home confinement, it alerts me that he's in that zone. Okay? Other things that we could do, like in the summertime, when we have these home confinement units and they want to mow their grass or pick up their mail, it's going to save an alert to me because I can incorporate, using the GPS program, their yard. Okay? I can narrow it down to where they're confined to that yard. If they leave that yard, then I know, rather than confine them to 50, 75 feet, because if they live in a trailer, get all shrinks down. If they have a bigger house, you know, I'm getting alerts every two to three minutes. And if I got, if I run out of the house every time I got an alert, you know, it makes it tough. Where with the GPS, I can incorporate their whole property boundary and allow to be able to not get notified unless they leave their property. able to not get notified unless they leave their property. Someone's saying, I got to go, got to go to the wood pot, get wood for the stove, I want to go out back to cut my grass, that kind of thing. Rather than calling in and we said, okay, you've got a half an hour to cut your grass, and not knowing where he's at in a half an hour, I can just spread that out onto his yard, and won't get alerted at all. So it's a very good, very good program. The reason we hadn't went to it before, because the availability just now, being able to use a landline, because these are true GPS units, and it's real-time GPS, so you know almost instantly where they're at, what they're doing. Reason we hadn't went to a lot of them before was because they function off, they're real GPS, but they function off cell towers. So if there's no cell service, like let's say, for instance, you have an individual down in Sebbysville, well, there's no cell service there, you know? The only way we would know what he done for an entire week is when he'd come to check in, and then would download everything. I just didn't like it. It wasn't very reasonable for me, you know? So you didn't know exactly where he was going for an entire week. With this certain unit here, it actually runs off a landline too. If they live where there's no cell service, they have a telephone, you plug it into the wall, or to the landline phone, it actually runs off that telephone to download everything. So that's why I think this system, as opposed to some of the other systems that I've looked at, is a lot better. And besides, we're already under them anyway, and it just, all it is, is like an addendum to the contract.
What would the costs be that are associated with this, if we were to upgrade from the current system to the GPS system?
It's three dollars and twenty cents.
Per unit?
Yes, sir.
There are no additional costs?
There's no, there's no additional cost for the unit. It's three dollars and twenty cents, and I made sure of that, because, and the good thing is, is, you know, this is like a lease type deal. We're leasing these units for three dollars and twenty cents, but that includes the fee to use it, and we don't get charged for that if it's just sitting on the shelf. It's only if it's being utilized.
The current units would go in storage, or is there a practical use for them in some aspect?
Well, what we, those current units that we had, we actually traded unit for unit whenever we purchased those. We would actually turn those back in and receive our old units that we traded in, is how that works. So we end up with our old equipment that we had before. So we still, but those units, I mean, they're outdated and everything, so.
Is there practical value to application?
Right. The also, the good thing with this type of lease is, if something new comes out, which they're talking about 2015, actually being able to utilize wireless, you automatically get that upgrade. You don't have to come and, you know, and that's the reason that we haven't got this, been able to use these new upgrades, is because we actually own the equipment. You know, and with it now, every time we send in a piece of equipment that's broken, from now on, it's going, we're going to be charged for it. You know, when leasing, it just gets, you send it in...
It's part of the agreement.
It's part of the agreement.
How many units do you have now, Rodney?
Now, we've got about thirty, thirty-five.
And how many are being used, on average?
Right now, nineteen, I believe.
So how many would you get? Would you get thirty-five, or would you...
I want to be able to, and that was part of the agreement too, I want to be able to have some sitting on the shelf. I don't want to be sitting there and be able to hook somebody up, and not having the equipment, and they promised me that we would have plenty to be able to utilize in case that we did.
But if you have that and set on the shelf, there would be no charge?
There's no charge for them, only if they're being used. They're going to come in, if you sign this agreement today, they're planning on coming in next week, because they're going to be, actually Lewis County is looking at the same, they are with one GPS company now, with this, I've showed them this unit that I'm going to, they're looking at it also. So they've already increased their fees to fifteen dollars in Lewis County, because they're going to partial GPS. I want to do complete GPS. I think we need to know where these people at, what they're doing.
Do we have approval, we have to raise it to fifteen dollars? Who has to give that approval?
Well, I actually sent out a letter to all the judiciary a week and a half ago, that I would like to increase them as of March first. Been trying to get in to meet with Judge Hall. He actually had already approved in Lewis County to increase the fee, so I don't think there's going to be an issue with getting approved here in Upsher County too.
He's had one as an approval?
Yes, and he'll send an order to the magistrates and prosecutor's offices and everything to, to actually increase the fees. But I think just, just the, you know, with your domestics and with your bond people, I mean, you take placing somebody on bond for, you know, property crimes and everything, I think if it gets used, it's endless. I mean, it could save the county a lot of money. I mean, there's no reason not to be able to use it more than what we have now.
You think that'll, that'll help those that put people on home confinement, or have that decision, that'll make them more apt to put them on with this type of system? You think that's been a problem in the past?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what the problem has been in the past. You know, I've met with, you know, the magistrates and the prosecutors, and they have said that, you know, it's just, the clientele is not coming through the magistrate's office that they feel could benefit from being placed on home confinement. I think this just expands it. I mean, it expands it tremendously, especially with being able to use the inclusionary zones and the exclusionary. Inclusionary means that they're at that house, that's where they're placed, if they leave. Exclusionary zones are, they're at the house, but if they were to leave, it would allow me to know sex offenders, I mean, your sex offense cases. If you release them on bond, you know, what better way to say, you don't have to go around any school, exclusionary zones on every school, you know, Burger King with the play yard and stuff like that? You can, I mean, it's endless what you can do with this program. So if it gets utilized, it can be very...
And I think once the magistrates and circuit court realizes how this GPS, I think you'll have double your numbers put on home confinement, because there will be no need to send somebody to jail, because they go, well, I'm afraid to put them on bond, because they may go here, they're yonder. When you can assure somebody of this new technology, you know exactly where they're at every minute of the day, and if they said they're going to Morgantown to work, you know whether they made that trip to Morgantown. You also know if they stopped between here and Morgantown to see somebody. I see this as a great idea, I see your numbers double, and I see you saving this county several thousand dollars in jail costs.
And it's for anybody. I mean, you can sit there and say, I work at St. Joseph's Hospital, I leave at eight. It's scheduled till four-thirty. How do I know unless I set up for eight hours that he's truly at work all eight hours? You don't. This will tell me that he's at work for eight hours.
I think once you show the magistrates and circuit court how this works, I think your numbers will double. I think it'll save the county several thousand dollars in jail costs, because you'll take out the unknown. The man that you can state, I know where he was, I know he drove straight from here to Morgantown, he went down seventy-nine, I know he got off of work at eight-fifteen, I know he left work at four-fifteen and drove straight back, I know he didn't stop anywhere. I think with all that knowledge, that, I think it'll see your numbers double.
One thing you can do too, to show the courts how well this equipment is working, the first time Rodney has an issue with one of the clients, he can bring his laptop computer right into the magistrate or circuit court, and set that up, and set that right up on the bench for your honor, and hit that button, and that judge can actually see what this person's doing himself. And you know that, if a judge can see that, he's going to say, wow, this is good stuff right here.
And it's available to print and everything also. I can click on it, print everything off, and it gives me a detailed accuracy of where they went, it shows actual arrows of the direction of travel that he went. A lot of your regular other GPS units just show dots, you don't know if he was coming or going. It also allows different things to be able to zoom in. I mean, it's pretty high-tech stuff. I can actually zoom in to the house from my computer and look at all four sides of the house. It gives me entries, exits, windows, I mean, it's just like zooming right into your, you know, your front yard.
What's the geographical area that's covered by the GPS? Entire country, the entire state?
The entire country.
The entire country, yes.
And it takes a reading every minute, whereas a lot of GPS units are every five minutes, this takes a reading every minute, so it pings them every minute of every day.
And they're right where they're at?
Yes, and it will, it'll hold that information for as long as Rodney needs it. If they're on for two years, he can go back two years and see where they were at a particular time.
I understand it's tied to the lease program, but there are replacement costs if things are damaged, lost, or stolen?
There is no replacement cost under the lease program.
Under the lease program.
Right. Under the old, the current one we're under now, there is replacement cost and stuff. And you figure a bracelet of five hundred dollars, it don't take long to chew up a budget.
That'd make a pretty good bill, wouldn't it?
Additional comments or questions?
I'm going to be approved.
Okay, any second. No favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Rodney.
You did a good selling job, Rodney. Once again, thanks for your outstanding work, and I'll be doing in front of State Upsher County for some money. Okay, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mike.
Reconvene our commission meeting. Mike, would you please identify yourself for the press and for the viewing audience?
Mike Harris, the director at the Dairy Court Center. What I'm here for today, other than, I think we already have on the agenda, our grant application. This year, we had a change in our board, considering we're only covering two counties now. The only slots that needed to be filled was a citizen-at-large, which has to be county commission-appointed, and substance abuse treatment physician has to be appointed. In order to make our board equally between Lewis and Upsher County, I found a lady that works at Sharp Hospital. She actually runs, or did run, the substance abuse coalition in Lewis County, her name's Erica Morris. She used to be Erica Tyer, her dad was or is a state trooper. She's willing to sit on our board to be that position. And I don't know if you all know Sidney Phillips, that has number one auto. He is interested in being a citizen-at-large to sit on our board. Now, in state code, we have to have three citizens-at-large and substance abuse treatment position, and everything else will be filled, so that's what I'm here for today.
Well, you said Sidney Phillips, I didn't recognize the name. That's Sid Phillips.
Yes.
I don't think you would recognize the name Sidney if someone were to call him on the street.
Right, right, yeah. Yep, that's...
Do we need to approve those for that?
Yes.
Okay.
A prayer.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say same sign. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Sorry about holding you.
Oh, no. Just a little. Okay.
Next, we have the agenda, Mr. Alex Bennett, who's representing the Upsher County Youth Baseball Association. Mr. Bennett, for the benefit of the viewing audience and the press, if you, again, states your name and your position.
I'm Alex Bennett, and I am here to represent the Upsher County Youth Baseball Association, and it's a new association. It was formerly known as the Upsher County Little League. In light of trying to better de-educate the children in the baseball sports, we transitioned from Little League to Pony League program. It allows us to not be limited to teaching true baseball. And it also allows us to seek out more fundraiser efforts and community support, where Little League are limited to one fundraiser agenda throughout the year. So why I'm here today, we're losing quite a few children to other counties to play baseball in those areas, because we don't have the avenues, or we're not advanced quite enough in areas to educate these children to play baseball. And parents want children to play baseball, kids need sports. So I'm here to actually ask the county to see what they can do as far as helping us with grants, funding grants, or even property that could be used to have other fields to practice on, or play on, or host other counties in tournaments, and things like that. We do have the field, which you guys will know up in the Tenirton area, that we do lease from the Board of Education. It's not really feasible when we change from a Little League program to a Pony League program, because the fields need to be bigger, the diamonds need to be larger, the baselines need to be longer. There's some changes that need to be made, and we don't really have a lot of area to make the changes. There's some safety features there that have come to light, that have been, they've been that way since the, actually, the development. There's a high wall up there that's really not a safe area, that it needs change. We lost a dugout roof and some blockwork this winter, just wind damage. We have quite a bit of field damage to vandals, four-wheelers and such. We need some more batting cages. We have one batting cage under roof, and the safety net for the cage had been cut pretty bad with the baccarat. So the net maybe it will be repaired, not sure. We have another batting cage area that takes on excessive amount of weather because it's not under roof. So we took upon ourselves to get some estimates, to have a new batting cage area built that would be under roof. And so far, our cheapest estimate is thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. So we've branched out and reached out to community businesses for sponsoring teams, and donations, and things like that, and the county, as always, has been there to help us and support us. But to make changes that we need to do for safety concerns, and to take the baseball program to a whole new level, to be competitive, and to get these kids to where they may have opportunities to be educated, to attend college on baseball, athletic scholarships, and things like that, even the girls' softball program, we need more money, and we need areas to have these practices and things like that. To play baseball and to get better at baseball, you have to play a lot of baseball. With Little League, we have a start date and an end date. With the Pony League program, we can pretty much choose how long we want the program to go. And the majority of all our surrounding counties, they're all Pony League programs, so as a Little League competitor, we weren't able to participate or compete with those other counties. Now we'll be able to compete with them, and we can travel and go to those other counties. So we just really need the help of the county commission to see about properties. We were told that there's property out behind the new armory building on the Brushy Ford Rip. I've went and looked at that personally. It's a flood area. It's going to take a lot of work to make that property higher, you know, several feet of dirt to get it up out of the flood plain. And anything that needs to be done to better that area, to make it safe for children to play on, we want to do what we can to make sure that it's applicable to other sports as well, not just baseball. You know, the football programs are struggling with areas to play, same way with soccer and things like that, so, you know, it's, it would really be great if we could have some guidance from the county commission, well, we have this property, it's available, but it's going to need this, and such like that. I know Lewis County gets help from their county commission for grants, and they just attended three grants. I have yet to get further information on what type of grants they were, but I didn't know what my application, or what your application could be in this matter, and how you may be able to assist us.
Well, if you'd had experience with the...
As far as grants, we could help facilitate a meeting with Region Seven, I mean, they're basically the county and the city's grant writers. We could make, can help set up a meeting with Shane White here, and you could sit down with him, see what's available and what's feasible, that'd be a good starting point. You know, the wellness complex, or field range, whatever, it's not my different names, but the county's spent a considerable amount of money, and at one point in time, there was one group that started to develop a baseball field out there, and I'm not sure what happened, but there was a load of sand up on the field, and I think that was about the extent of it. And, you know, maybe, maybe that's something that you could come to a park or a meeting, and I know we've had meeting after meeting after meeting with different groups, and it's... and, I know we've had meeting after meeting after meeting with different groups, and it's hard to, it's hard to develop a multipurpose field because it does take a lot of money to develop a baseball field or soccer field or whatever. And, and I know there's a, it's a hard balance there to allow that to be multipurpose field with a commitment, financial and family, with a particular group or sports type like baseball has to spend to develop a field. So I would suggest coming to the park board meeting and talking to that board about, get everyone's thoughts on feasibility of that, and then, in looking at that field, how much field do you think it would take to get, to get the area? Because actually, we've had that survey.
I would imagine at least three foot, three foot of fill.
Right.
To attain, beating the floodplain area. And you know you're going to get some settling, so I would do that minimal every beat. But I'm no expert at that. I just, I know the program's struggling, and we're losing out more children all the time. The Bay Bridge program, which is the older kids, there's two teams worth out of that and they're all on Lewis County because we don't have the airfield. And I find that as a shame, I really do, especially when our community's developing so, and, you know, the kids, they need the sports, and they shouldn't have to feel that they need to go to another county when they have the ability to help them here. It's a nonprofit organization, and it's all volunteer-based, and we have a great group of coaches and assistants, and we've got great board members, and everyone's hungry to see it grow and develop. And I'm just trying to get the fire started, football rolling.
Well, I would say, get with Megan, she can help me get a meeting set up, Region 7, and see what the possibilities are there, and then I'd suggest you could get with Megan also and see when the park board meets, if you want to come and lay out things to them, and I'd love to.
It's March 10th.
March 10th?
Monday, March 10th. Usually meets on a Monday, doesn't it?
It's what time?
At 6:00 here in the chambers.
I'll still shoot you an email. And I still need to speak with Shane Whitehair, you said, pertaining to grants?
I'll send him an email and CCU for the email that you sent to me and then, you know, me to connect it.
That's great, that's great. I bet it gets darned well.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Appreciate your concern and your efforts. 10:30 on the dot and 10:30 on the agenda. Calls for the Upshur County School Board to meet here, pressification of school board levy election results. Megan, do we have any paperwork on that?
We do. Is this?
Yep.
That's everything? All right. I'll just put it up here, and if you all want to, I think all of them need to sign it, correct?
Yeah, all of you need to sign it.
Maybe it'll. It's our information. Uh, do you?
Does it need to be a motion to certification?
Um, I've never done that before. Do you have two more that we can get signed on?
Blue pen there.
There's three copies.
Here's one.
It was expensive pen, but I want to make sure I get mine back. So I'll make, is there a motion to approve the certification of school board levy election results?
So.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Both being moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye, motion carries.